You're on mute, though, just to let you know. Uh oh.
There we go.
There you go.
I had nobody home, so I had it took me about fifteen minutes to try to figure out how to get on this thing.
Ah, alright.
I'm not a computer guy. I don't use them anymore.
It's okay. You you're gonna get good at it. Plenty of time. Uh, okay, so yeah, we're recording right now, Adam, so you can start the meeting if you like. As the acting chair.
Alright, so we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Alright. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So we only had the two things tonight, right? Just the Plymouth Plymouth Street in the minutes, I believe. At least that's all my wife told me about.
Um, yeah, I think it was just the application for zoning, which was Plymouth Street, like you said.
Yeah.
Um, minutes, which do I have them? See, did you do? It's on the original meeting invite, right?
Yeah.
Um. The other thing I just want to make mention, if I could, Adam, is I got a package the other day. Um. I brought it back to Melissa so she can put it in the planning room, planning boardroom. But it was a three-ring binder. It was a lot of drawings about the new sewer main. Um, update the project that's going to be going on. And, you know, boards in town are required to get copied on it. So if anything were to come up, it's on file in in our office, so.
Alright.
Or we'll, yeah, it's either there now or Melissa will get it there.
Alright.
Okay. So.
Do you have? Do you have the capability to bring it up on the screen? Because I can't do that.
I do have the capability to do that. I'm just gonna move it over to the other screen so I can see it. Uh.
I might read it off and stuff like that, but I just don't know how to bring it up. Yeah, I'm trying.
Alright, well, just if you look at your screen, if you want to try it by all means, you see at the bottom of your screen? It says, "Security Participants Chat Share Screen."
Yep, yes.
If you if you click on share screen, if you have multiple screens, you just need to find the screen that has it.
Okay, well, yeah.
So I can.
Do once I figure out how to find it, so.
I can share it if you want, or you want to try it, see how it goes.
It on here, so.
You don't see it there.
With what they have, what my wife and daughter have up on this.
Okay. Alright, I'll I'll take it.
That's all you have to do. That's not bad.
I mean, other meetings, I mean, you'll have to figure out is either Melissa will have to show it on the screen or somebody else will have to pick it up and show it.
Yeah, as long as they're home, they can show me. They can do it, set it up for me. My wife said an eye doctor, so.
Okay.
I'm home now.
Alright, so I have it up on my screen and you should be able to see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so. Location of the property is five forty-four Plymouth Street. Residence type is A two. Type of structure is proposed. Owner's name is Tanya Roach and Kenneth Amaru. I hope I didn't mess up the name. When did you first acquire the property? Two thousand fourteen. Has applicant application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requ- requested is section six, six dash five variants. Owner wishes to add a front porch to the existing pre-existing home. Pretty straightforward. Uh, I don't know what the, I don't have, it's all, it's all packed up now. My zoning board setbacks, but what you have here is you have the corner of Plymouth Street and Beverly Road. So to put just a, when you're looking at lot setbacks, this property doesn't have a backlot. So the the vertical line on the right is a side, the vertical, the horizontal line on the top is a side. And then everything that's on the street is frontage.
Okay.
So this twenty-foot, eighteen-foot, forty-one-foot, and forty-three-foot is all the setbacks that they're looking. So I believe, I'm gonna say off the top of my head, like I said, I don't recall what the setback is, is probably like thirty-five feet. I I could be wrong, but my guess is they're looking for relief on the setback. So this puts it closer to the street.
And the house isn't even far enough back then.
The house isn't even far enough back as well, so. Um. My thought on this, I don't really see an issue here. I don't think it's going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. What is being proposed to have happen? I'll make a motion in a few minutes if you want. Uh, what I don't like is whoever Antonio land surveyors are, shame on them. This is not anything close to what we require for a site plan approval. This is, uh, someone just sketched, I mean, he did a nice job sketching it, but he sketched it on a piece of note paper.
Yeah.
That happens to have his company information on it and he stamped it. But what you don't see is I don't see names of a butters. I don't see driveways of a butters. Um, you know, I should see a lot more information on here than we do.
That was the first thing I thought, too.
And, you know, like Calagari will do a D-size a thirty-four by um, twenty-four sheet that's going to be stamped and it it'll say the zone type and what relief is being requested. So you're kind of in the dark on what they're looking to do. You do know they're gonna make, put up a porch. That's what they want to do. And, you know, all in all, what they're looking to do, I don't see a problem with it, but the the engineer who did this drawing did them no favors.
I think he did it at lunch.
So I am going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that normally this application would be recommended for approval, except the land surveyor, Michael Antonio, failed to submit a proper site plan as required by the zoning board rules and regulations and does not show a butters, does not show driveways or any other information such as locusts that is required.
I have a question.
Okay.
The front lot is how close to the street?
Forty-two, forty-one feet is closest, it looks like, at the corner of that.
I think it's down at the, if you're looking down towards where it says additional plan, that's forty-one foot, which is closest from the the proposed porch to the roadway line, okay?
Um. The frontage for A two is thirty feet.
Right, so remember, Beverly road also requires frontage, so they have eighteen feet.
Okay, yeah.
So that's where they're looking for relief is the eighteen and the twenty.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, and that is to the 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 roadway there. So they don't meet that. And again, like I said, I mean, you, I don't think it's a bad plan. I don't think it's going to be a detriment. It looks like it'll be a nice porch. I mean, I don't know the elevations of it and all that, but where you see that little hexagon on the corner, it looks like it's gonna be a nice little sitting area and so I think it's gonna be an improvement for the the neighborhood. But it's just when, they just did it the wrong way and and I I'm not trying to punish the applicant, but, you know, at some point, and we started to look at this and say, you know what, enough is enough. You know, yeah, we feel bad for the applicant, but there is a a process to submit um, proper plans, and this isn't one of them.
Right.
So. And that's just my motion, so.
No, absolutely. You know, some of the stuff's even hard to read of what they have written down in some spots.
Printing is not very good for an engineer, like a doctor, but I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Again, we don't have the size of the existing house either.
Is that correct?
No, so I mean, all of the requirements for the site plan are are not really shown. I mean, they did show that property's driveway sixteen by twenty. Um, but nothing else. You know, is there a fence there? I don't know. I mean, I can look it up.
I look, there's no fence.
No, okay.
This, it's a little small ranch. It's right across from um, the old Clayton's.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, it's, if you can see it, I mean, that's a nice little house.
Yeah.
Can you see that? I mean, it's it's it, you can't see that?
No, yeah.
I messed up then.
You're already doing better than me.
You see, you see Google right now, right?
Yep, my computer's going haywire.
Uh, you gotta, you gotta send you out to the high school for a course.
I just, I just out of practice. I used to be on it all the time, every day, but now it's just my phone.
So, you know, here's part of the porch that would be done.
It's not even a very big house.
No, it's not a big house. It's probably a two-bedroom. There'll be a porch here. I mean, you, I think it'll be a nice addition.
Yeah.
Um, it's a, it's a small odd-shaped lot, but, you know, the size, shape, and topography of the lot is why I I'm saying I don't think there's any problem with it, but you know, the plan submitted incorrectly and, you know, the zoning board will listen to that and, you know, I mean, they may listen to the applicant and just say, you know what? Yeah, we don't see there being a big problem. Um, and that's, that's theirs. I mean, is, we're just making a recommendation for it. And it's nothing against the applicant. I think the applicant has a good plan there. It's just, again, you know, we're trying to make sure that the engineers who are submitting plans are submitting what we're asking for because we need the information.
Right.
Um, and if we, if he's, he or she is submitting in this application, they gotta put a list of a butters. So anybody within three hundred feet, I believe it is, uh, has to be notified of the hearing. And they get to go and say, you know, they're in favor of it, or they don't think it's a good addition to the neighborhood or whatever the case may be, but they get to be part of it. Um. So, I mean, that's what we're looking at there, so.
Well, it looks like they already have the overhang for the front porch, for the front part of the porch out there.
It's a very short overhang, I think.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it's hard to tell exactly.
I mean, if I were to do it, I'd probably go out further because you're gonna be looking at more porch area to walk out on, but.
Yeah, because it says six feet wide for the porch.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's just a short overhang, so.
That's only probably about three feet.
My guess is if, because the way that roofline is, not that it matters to the application, but they'll probably take from this point here.
Yep.
And make less of a slope, but more coverage.
Yeah.
And wrap it around it, so.
Looks almost like the door would hit the roof right there when they open.
It actually does, but it probably just clears it.
Just clears it, yeah. There's a notch in there and something.
Yeah.
It's weird looking.
Yeah. Okay, so, so Mr. Chair, you got a motion on the table? Um, I don't know if you have any more comments or questions, but.
I have one.
Yes?
So I know that we've, over this course of time, have gone over many plans, always with the same level of disappointment in the plan. How come we never just say plan insufficient, period?
You can.
But I know it's not gonna change anything, but we keep giving us bad plans and we keep kind of accepting them.
Um, you know, we could do if, I mean, we said it in so many words, but we, you know, the idea is it's not a bad plan for the plan, what they're trying to do. The drawing is awful, okay? What, I mean, I can add to my motion. You want to send a a notice to Michael, Paul, Antonio at the address listed on the the plan and say, any and all drawing submissions to be accepted by the Town of Whitman must follow the rules and regulations for site plan approval.
I like it.
Yes.
So we can add that right to the motion. Um, that way, you know, the applicant might get relief from the zoning board, but you're still putting that in in the face of the engineer. And, I mean, I'm an engineer. If I get a little like that, I'm taking it a little personally, too, but I'm gonna look at it and say, okay, maybe I should read the rules and regulations. Okay, yeah, I messed up.
Yeah.
I won't ever do that again.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Alright, do we have a motion on the floor by Eric? Do we have a second?
I'll second the amended version.
Okay. That works. Do we have any further discussion? No, alright, all in favor, go around. Elaine?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
Alani?
In favor.
And I'm in favor also, unanimous.
Yeah, that was easy.
Yeah. My wife wants to do one of those farmer's porches, too.
Gotta get a right plan done. This is pretty rough.
The only guy who did our house, the Gavi guy in the school, in the Sunday who did my house to begin with.
Uh. That's funny.
I had to go get all my, I have like five sets of plans I had to get from him before I went to the zoning board. I had seven sets of plans made up, one for each member, and none of them even looked at them.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. The box.
And, oh, that's brutal.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm opening up the minutes.
Alright.
Um.
Got a nice, easy meeting tonight before Thanksgiving. Nice weather anyway, too.
We haven't gotten any bills uh, for any engineers? Okay. Enough?
Yeah. I thought I was missing emails, but I only saw the minutes at first.
Well, this time of year is usually a little slow. I mean, and everything that's going on as well is a little bit slow as well. Uh, do 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 do.
I don't even have, I don't even print notes. I got Brow up on my phone just to read them real quick.
Yeah, I wish.
I am.
I can't find them on my phone. I ran them. I think they're fine. I make a motion to pass, I accept them.
Uh, we say, couple of spell checks, but other than that, I would say that's fine. Just a second here on page two. And then I got too many O's in my name here, so. So if we take that O out and that O, I'll be happier.
Alright, the spell check didn't catch your name, I guess.
No, it never catches my name. But other than those edits, I would say, yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Alright, motion by Elaine, seconded by Alani. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
Yeah, I'm in favor also.
Okay.
And I'd say the part of the last thing is if we're gonna have a meeting before Thanksgiving, which probably not, right?
A lot of times we don't have that meeting because some people, well, usually people are traveling and everything else, but.
I don't think that's happening much this year.
I mean, I don't know if you're gonna see much come across your desk for that stuff. You know, applications or anything else that's gonna be pressing.
Yeah.
Um. So, I mean, it's up to, up to the board whether they want to have the next meeting or not, really.
What's up, do we have to make a motion on this, or?
Need to vote on it, yep.
Okay.
Adam, can I ask Melissa a question?
Absolutely.
How much notice do you have to give to get the Zoom call in?
Um, not much, like if we knew like three days before.
Okay, because what I was thinking was if we didn't have any um, mail, then we wouldn't bother, but if we had stuff come in front of us, then maybe we should. But I'll go along with what everybody else wants.
Alright. So, I I'd say, yeah, I agree with Elaine. If we don't have anything, might as well just skip it. You know, unless there's any pending bills that have to be paid right, right then and there. You know, but I'd say, you know, if someone wants to make a motion to skip the meeting unless it's something dire.
So I want to make that motion, or you making the motion?
I don't know if I can make a motion.
And I, I'm over the bin, you can, but if you want to make it, you know, keep uh, some people happy with it, I'll make the motion to postpone the next meeting, which would have been on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Unless something of urgency requires the board to reconvene. In that case, Melissa will notify everybody and we just have to make sure that we have enough time on the posting. Um, because you have to public posting and all that, so.
To say if nothing comes in by the seventeenth, the week before?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Not give enough time?
Yep.
That sounds reasonable.
Alright, we have a second Eric motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, seconded by Elaine. All in favor, Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
Sounds good to me, too, unanimous. Alright, that was easy. I can't wait to get off these computers. This is just.
So, I'm gonna ask a question here of the board, and it may not be for this meeting. It might be for another meeting we have that it needs to be discussed with me, me leaving. Um, everybody moves up in the position, so Adam, you move up in the chair, you know, everybody moves up. Um, I don't know, I mean, if it's something that you guys wanted to reorganize, but I don't know. You can do that. You might have to check to see if that's something that you wanted to do or just move everybody up and designate the positions and hold the meetings that way.
Okay.
But what'll also come about of it is, is Chair, you know, any bills that need to be paid, Adam, you'll have to sign them. If you're not able to, Vice Chair will sign them. Um, and same with payroll. So Melissa has hours that she'll have ready to submit and just needs a signature. What I recommend you, anybody who does sign anything, when you sign it, print your name underneath it and date it. So the town clerk knows exactly who's doing it and why.
Okay.
Um, and all that.
Alright, that's something I have to stop in the town hall every week or every other week?
Well, I think it's whatever you can coordinate with Melissa. So she says that she's got a bunch of bills and some uh, payroll. You know, what what's convenient for you? I've been running down to the senior center when I can.
Yep.
She's working over there, trying to get it taken care of without it getting held up too long, but sometimes timing doesn't always work out, but try to do it without it lagging out too much.
Alright, I have an email, Melissa, so we can figure, we'll figure it out.
And you need original signatures for it because they don't like the digital signatures.
Ah, that's alright. I drive by there every day anyway.
Okay.
So it's not a big deal, as long as they don't mind the noise of my big freight line for a little while.
There you go.
Eric, what about, what about your position being replaced? How does that work?
What um, should happen is, I, well, before you adjourn, then why don't we do this? Um, would have hoped that something might have gotten started, but it didn't. Uh, make a motion to send a memo to Lisa Green, the acting town administrator and the Whitman Selectmen.
I think they're already aware of it because they talked about it on the selectman meeting.
They are, but I just want to close the loop as far as the board requesting of them for anybody for an appointment. Um, so the memo would read, um, the planning board is requesting the selectman and the town administrator search for an appointed member of the planning board to fill the vacant seat.
And when does your term expire?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Well, if we don't meet again, I'm done.
No.
The thirtieth. Uh, when, it it expires in May.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, so if there's an appointment, that appointment will be good until the election, but that person would have to take out papers to run for that seat. To fill would be a full term at that point. It's not a partial term at that point. It's five years?
Yeah.
And I've been doing it too long.
Yeah, mine was five years.
Yeah. So like if if I left mid midterm, you know, it would be a two or three-year voted-in position.
Right.
Fill that seat position because they're all staggered.
Yeah, because mine was, mine was for one year, Elaine's was for two when we first on.
So, yeah, this appointment would be until May. What's up?
Are they all five years?
Yep.
You're up in May, too, right, Elaine?
Um, the card I got from the town clerk doesn't say five years.
No, because you're filling in a vacant seat.
But I ran for election again.
You you ran for election to fill the remaining time on that seat?
Right.
So what do you got, three years on it or two years on it?
No, next year.
Next year, so that position ran out at that time for the person who held the seat. And when you ran for the position, they don't, they don't just extend it out five years. What they're doing is you were elected to continue that seat till the end of its elected timeframe.
I see.
So you, you have to.
If I run next year, it'll be for five after that.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, that's what I just did. I did, my first one was for one year and I had to do it this past year also.
Right, we've both been here two years.
Yes, and you took the two-year seat. I did the one-year.
Yeah.
That was easy enough.
Alright, so you have a motion on the table for a memo to the selectman.
Alright, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, seconded by Elaine. Any further discussion? All in favor, Elaine?
In favor.
Lonnie?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
I am in favor also, four more, another unanimous.
Yeah.
How long did it take for you guys to fill mine and Elaine's when we came on?
I was no time at all.
No?
A long time.
I thought it was a long time.
We actually were having trouble getting a quorum. Uh, so you guys were coming in at the time that we were in our reduction of board members because it was seven at one point. And the problem with seven is you need a minimum of four people to have a vote, actually to have a meeting.
Right.
Um, and we'd have three people show up and we couldn't meet.
Okay.
So it was, it was, you know, it wasn't that there was a lot of business happening, but anytime there was business, it was tough trying to get everybody to sit in it. Now, Wayne Andrews took a position uh, just because he didn't want to see us not have meetings.
Right.
You know, because he used to be on the planning board and he came back.
Yeah.
Um, but he got to a point where he said, okay, if we can get some other people in here, he'll step down. And that's what he did. Uh, give him a lot of credit for that. It was, you know, he stepped right up. Um, which was really good, but this one, I mean, I, there's not a lot of people knocking down the door to get on the board.
Right.
But you never know, somebody may want to get involved, especially now where meetings are all online. Really don't have to lug yourself to the town hall.
I like going to town hall.
You know, I mean, you can sit there in your pajamas and nobody will know it. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Um, but yeah, no, I mean, you never know. It depends on, you know, people or the right timing for some people to get involved in things, you know? Um, I mean, I've been involved in the zoning board and the planning board. I can't even remember how long. I think it was two thousand three that I started. Um, somewhere around there, but I had the opinion I couldn't complain if I didn't get involved.
Right.
So that got me involved and I did leave the planning board for a period of time when I was working in New Jersey. But then when I came back, they reappointed me and I got back into it. It was like a six-month stint, I think it was. So.
Alright. No, no other further business? We all good?
I think I'm, I'm all set.
I wish you best of luck, Eric.
No, thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you. I'm sure you'll see me around.
Hopefully.
Be there and anywhere.
You always pop in on one of these.
Yeah, it's a public meeting, why not?
You always come and say hello.
Send me, send me the invite. If I, if I'm able to, I'll jump in the call, listen.
All right, we'll leave you on the link.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess that leaves us to Alani now. For her favor.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, motion by Alani, second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, Elaine?
In favor.
Lonnie?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
I am in favor also.
Excellent.
Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thank you very much.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you.
Stay safe, Eric. Good luck.
You too. Thank you.